All right, so we're gonna get started because we have a few things on our agenda tonight.
Eddie, check it out.
We're gonna start with resolution number three for the Charlestown Mall. Marie is here, she wants to speak on behalf of her or if anybody has any questions regarding it, and then she has to run to another meeting, so we want to give her the courtesy of speaking on this one first.
Yes, thank you guys, I think I've met everyone in here, for those of you who don't know, my name is Marie Ms. Magic, I'm what the Assistant Corporation Counsel, upstairs, I handle a lot of the tax lien foreclosures, this is why this was assigned to me, I sent you guys a memo along with the resolution, kind of explaining what it is that I'm looking to do, this, what we're trying to do is very similar to what Harkmore County did with the Charlestown Mall, so I think a lot of you guys are familiar with the situation over there, it sits on Harkmore's land, including Natty County's land, and a portion of the buildings is within the city, and there's also a parking lot. So there's a provision in the real property tax law that allows us to, to remove parcels of property off of, off of the tax rolls, we don't typically do this, I believe this is the first time the city's doing this, the reason we want to do this is, we believe, and I'm asking council to have the same finding, that there's really no way for us to enforce the tax lien on this property, so by removing it, what that would do is, it would cut some of the bleeding, right now, the city, city taxes are accruing on it, and so are the school taxes, and by law, we have to pay the school taxes every year, I believe they're like $5,000 every year, which, they do add up, I mean, we've done-
Close one.
Yeah, so this would kind of stop that from accruing and for us to constantly have to, you know, pay it off, so that's what this legislation does. If there ever came a time where this property, someone ultimately demolished it, a new developer came in, wanted to put money into it, definitely I'd bring another resolution, or whoever's here, to the council, to put it back onto the tax rolls, and that can be done, but right now, there's really no way for us to enforce the lien other than to foreclose, which again is something I do not recommend, and I believe we homewho the reasons why, so that's what I have for you, if you guys have any questions.
Yeah, how far behind is the owner, not just this year, last year, how many years previous?
Ten.
And what's the total amount?
I-
Four hundred and twenty.
Yes.
Four hundred and twenty?
Yes.
Thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars. Yes, from, from 2011 till 2020.
So he's, he's gonna get off the one for four hundred and twenty?
It's, some, some people like to say that, but there's, again, there's really no mechanism or way for us to go after the owner for that, other than to foreclose.
Let me say this, we had, how many fires there, three, four? How much manpower did we use to go there? To have our guys go in there and maybe get injured, so he's gotta come up with some sort of money, even to reimburse us for our firefighting, that we had to save his building, how many times? So I think, I think what we should do is at least go to the owner and say, read, get, get an evaluation from the fire department, how much it costs us to spend hours upon hours with fuel and manpower and overtime, and whatever, whatever it was, for three or four times that we were there, and at least reimburse us for that.
I understand your concern, Councilwoman, but providing fire services, that's, that, yeah, that's what the city does, again, there's no mechanism in place for me to be able to do that.
Four hundred and twenty dollars.
Um, the other thing that we discussed possibly at the Corporation Counsel's office, what I typically do for properties that are dilapidated, there's issues with them, fires, I'll file an order, show cause, pretty much I submit to the court through the co-enforcement officer, through the fire marshal, why it's dangerous, and I typically get the demolition order, and those properties, at that point, the owners don't care, there's no insurance, so I get the demolition order, and the city's on the hook for the demo, and sometimes, we can enforce that judgment or that lien, if the property owner has other assets, most of the time, they don't, here, again, I would not recommend doing that, because ultimately it would fall on the city, and it's not, you don't, it's a lot.
It's a lot of cost of that building.
It's approximately twenty million dollars.
To demos, the number I got today.
And we cannot, he owned, this gentleman owns other properties too, but we cannot do anything because it's an LLC.
It's an LLC, yes, and piercing the corporate veil is something that is very, very difficult.
It's not gonna happen, forget about it.
Courts, courts don't really go after the individual that's behind it, I mean, that's the purpose of an LLC, is to shield yourself from liability, I understand it can be, you know, you're confronted with a situation like this, but it's, it is what it is.
It's change state law, right?
It really, I mean, that's what it comes down to, we have called, you know, Mayor's office has called too, we've had meetings with federal officials, with, with state officials, everyone says, you know, you have to, you have to, city, you have to take, put it into your name essentially, and then maybe, maybe then we can give you some funds, but again, the city should not be taking on this type of liability, putting in its name, and then trying to eventually figure out what to do with it.
It's almost identical to our point, it's gonna be a massive load, and grandminds are gonna have to break it down.
Yeah.
Like they did over there.
So like I said, Harkmore County did something very similar, it's just, it's off the road, at least, at least cuts the bleeding out now.
And Harkmore County was able to accomplish that, correct?
Yes, yes, I think it's a relatively newer statute, this section, it's 1131, or subsection D, I think it is, but allows us to do that, and like I said, if, if the time comes where someone's willing to take it on as a project, invest in it, by all means, we'll put it back on the tax rolls, council will pass it, I think in a heartbeat.
We haven't received it in ten years anyway.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Geez.
So wasn't there any insurance, Marie, did you ever have any insurance?
Maybe, back when it was functional.
No, I mean, when, when Councilman DeBrango said, you know, there was fires over there, it was never insured.
No, not in recent memory, no, I mean, there's, no one would insure that, it's just kind of been left to go.
So you wanna pass the law, you don't pay your taxes, fire department, police department don't respond?
I don't know what you're saying.
Every time you go yell, you go yell. I wish.
You wish.
It just, it just kills you.
It is very frustrating, yes, yes, I understand.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you very much.
I guess we're all on board on this?
Yes, everyone on board?
Take the liability off the city, so.
If you're on board, I'm, I'm on board.
It's your district.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
Aye, aye, fun for Joe.
All right, so we'll go back to the beginning, 301, 319, dot five, five, dash, one, dash, nine, four, Polittary Ave, this one is for the amount of $1,000, and is in my district, I'm good with that one, 928 Lansing Street, is the amount of $7,000, I'm good with that one as well, the next one is a, it is a proclamation, right?
Yes.
Proclamation, Councilwoman LaMedico, this is sponsored by full council, staying true to the Medicaid promise, we'll read that one.
Want me to read that one?
I'll read that one. The next one is an ordinance to rescind section two, dot, zero, six, seven, article pertinent to the compensation of Utica Common Council research analysis, does anyone have any questions about this, do you wanna talk about it?
Has to be a local law. Yeah, so, I talked to the judge about this, the common council can appoint a research analyst, and so I wanted to begin that conversation, the current law right now reads that the person has to be paid $12,500, so I thought that maybe if we could write something that would take that away, in terms of us having to, if we appoint this person, have to have that at $12,000, the council may say, you can hire research analysts for $7,000, or $10,000, or whatever, that we won't have to abide by that particular part of the code, the reason why I think research analyst would be good is because it would help alleviate our clerk from having to do all of the research in terms of policy that we may have, it would give us another person, point person in terms of writing legislation, being that now, we're here at six o'clock on Wednesday, and we can call committee meetings, but mostly this, this is our, our meeting structure, and in 2014, I believe the council considered appointing one of our members currently as a research analyst, so I think the position has merit, it's in the code already, and I think it would be a good addition to the council.
It has to be a local law. If, if, has to be a local law to change it, you cannot eliminate the board estimate in the portion, you can't change the fee, but even if you change the fee, board being there has to approve it, also, the law as written now says that you have to have a budget item in when you do it, so that means if you put, if you didn't pass it, I do the local law, you pass it, and whatever figure you put in, you put in this annual estimate that you're gonna get, the only thing that you have to remember about that, you could put it in the annual estimate, that doesn't mean that board estimate portion are gonna approve it, that doesn't, you know, that's one separate power, if, if you were gonna do this, I would do the local law, whatever, whatever you wish to do, if you're not gonna do it, that's it. It has to be a local law.
I'm not really interested, Judge, because if I recall correctly, we combined both your services and the research analyst at one time in the past, and you were able to do both jobs, and to this day, you do both jobs.
Well, I ended up doing both jobs.
You ended up doing both jobs.
And so we fired him, Councilman Phillips.
And I, I really don't wanna tap into any taxpayer dollars right now, seeing that you're doing an excellent job at both jobs.
We got the deputy clerk coming too, whatever.
Doing some research as well.
That's right.
There you go, so at this time, I really can't support this right now.
We have three members.
Councilman Moody, but, go ahead.
It was just a thought, in terms of that particular aspect of the law.
Sure, but just to see if there's support for it, to move forward.
But we can table it, absolutely, absolutely.
Do we wanna table this one, I mean, I, I don't, personally, I don't wanna raise taxes at this point, and it's something that is being taken care of, I mean, I've seen it function for the past four years personally, so for me, I'm not interested in it.
But I, but for, but for me, it was a question given new changes, and I am concerned about new changes in terms of how this council work in, in the workload, but again, like as previously mentioned, we have a deputy clerk being a partner, but I'd rather table it as opposed to voting on it, because if we want to revisit something in the future-
You can always reintroduce it if you prefer, or so either table it or reintroduce it, doesn't matter which way we do it, you prefer.
President Goleen.
Just procedural, with the new rules of order, all the potential legislations reviewed by this pre-meeting conference slash committee, the whole, if this is not introduced this evening, and then tabled on the floor, if you'd like to bring this up again, you'd have to again present it to this committee, because this, this is a committee-
This is the committee, right?
Well, this is the committee a whole, so, you, we, on the floor, you can't just table it, it would need to be introduced first, that's all, that's my only point.
You could table it on the floor without any type of-
Why would you table something that's not performed?
I'm just, it's just procedural.
If you want it not performed-
It's not your property.
I will do it, the way it has to be done, you just tell me what you want in it, and I withdraw.
Well, right, at this time, Judge, there's no support to it, so.
I'll do whatever.
Well, there's some support, I would support it, but, I mean, so there is, it's some support.
So this piece of legislation's gotta be void, because it's not in the right format right now, if you don't, you know, it'll change in the format if you need to do that in the future, and then we can reintroduce it at this time, so I'd like to discharge this piece of legislation, if nobody has any issues with it.
And if you do want to reintroduce it, introduce that as a local law?
Absolutely.
But I want some direction from the council, if you have a fee in mind, that you wanna put it in, I'll put it in.
Start this chart.
Of course, you can make that arrangement, you have to do it during the budget period, I will sign you.
But I wanna make the point too, that this is our committee meeting, that it is proper procedure to present a legislation that you're thinking about to this committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course, you could even, you could even introduce, I'm just saying that I, I have to do it properly, but if you wanna lay it on the table, I don't care about that either, that has something to do with me, I just draw them, I don't pass them.
The next ordinance is ordinance number four, I'd like to call Bob Schofield up here, just so we can answer any questions anybody might have on this one, this one is the ordinance authorizing the permission to build an encroachment upon the city rights of Wade on Lafayette Street, also, Councillor Hartman is here.
Kate, would you mic him over so we can see your face?
I'll come right over.
Zack is in the corner.
That's right.
First, could you just, either one of you or both, give us just a rundown of what this means for the city, what this, what changes this shows for us, and, so that we can kind of get a handle on that from your perspective.
Well, I can tell you technically why we're asking for it, and you can fill in the legal reasons why it has to be asked for, so as you all know, we're building a hostel in downtown, right now Columbia Street is closed, and Lafayette Street is open, that's purposeful, because we can't close both those streets at the same time, and allow for safe passage of local traffic, as well as public safety vehicles, as a part of our studies that were done for the foundation of the new building, we ascertained through geotechnical studies that the soil stabilization, the work that's been done on the ground to hold up this 673,000 square foot building, has to be further out than we had originally expected.
Yeah, virgin ground.
So which, well, it's not virgin ground, that's, that's the ground, underneath that ground are all kinds of things, we've come across-
Anything, any gold?
Nothing of any value, everything we've dug up-
They're all his.
Everything we've dug up is costing us money at this point, the side of money, so as a result of that, the soil stabilization location exceeds into the boundaries underneath Lafayette Street, so Lafayette Street is planned, for those of you who have heard this discussion in the past, for those of you who haven't, I can explain, at some point Lafayette Street will be conveyed to NVHS as part of the property, Lafayette Street where it is now will be the front entrance and driveway, but we can't ask for that conveyance now, because you still, we still need Lafayette Street, so we need to have the approval here, because we need to encroach on city property, which is underneath the street, it will not impact the stability of the street, will not impact any of the utilities under the street, so we're not going to create a scenario where the street's gonna cave in, because we're working underneath it, but we do need your permission in order to start the work, so that's why this is your thing, does that make sense?
Is that an actual building ready?
Well, I'm gonna add a little-
I thought it was a building, but UPD and everybody's at, the emergency services are okay.
So Chief Williams and Chief Angers Hall has met with us on numbers of occasions, they are fully supportive of that, I confirmed that as recently as yesterday, I spoke to both of them myself.
So this is basically just moving your barrier over, or what is, well, I, I wanna just state that, you know, Mike Mahoney and I have talked to Eric Linz, who's one of the engineers working on the project, and it, like Bob said, it is the footers, but the building itself is also going to be encroaching partially onto the right of way, we don't anticipate that that part of the building is going to be built until-
That, the building itself won't be built until after we've conveyed, or you've conveyed Lafayette Street to NVHS.
The foundations are-
But the foundation work and the ground stabilization starts that encroachment, we did provide a, a drawing for the city planning department and the mayor to outline the shape of the buildings, there was some concern how close to Lafayette Street it gets, and, and that's why we need to convey Lafayette Street, because it will eventually go in, pass the sidewalk, but at this particular point, we're not ready to start building the building, we're just ready to start building the foundation.
So what you're saying is that the foundation underground needs to be larger than the building that will sit on top of it-
Correct.
-in order to create a stable ground, given what your, given what the soil is like, the bedrock is like, et cetera, you need to create this larger footprint underground.
And the reason we're asking that, that's exactly correct, the reason why we're asking that today, as opposed to a month ago or five months ago, there were buildings in that location up until recently, so once those buildings left, we were able to do soil sampling, so geotechnical studies, go down and we find out actually what's in the ground underneath, and we find a lot more non-natural substances than we, well, we expected that, quite frankly, we found everything from-
Any sewer pipe that mean out of oak?
We, we have found that, yeah, but that, we will probably find that when we dig up Cornelia Street.
Was that your question?
No.
Councillor Miola has a question.
No rule protocol procedures about road cuts, is this, is this outside of that? Or, 'cause you know what we have to do with that?
Yes, you do.
I have to bond it.
Well, yes, well, they're, they're super bonded anyways, I'm sure at this point, but when they're getting a building permit, they're gonna probably provide a bond.
Because we're not closing the road.
Well, we're not closing the road.
If we were closing the road, they would have to bond, but now they're cutting the road, and we still own it, they have to bond.
Right, so there's two separate things, there's a process under the Code of Ordinances for a road cut permit, and that is when, let's say, for a, a smaller scale example, when you're putting in a new lateral sewer line, okay, in your house, you need a permit, because you're cutting into our right of way, okay, and there's a fee, a per, a per-square-foot fee, as well as a per-square-foot deposit fee that's refundable, or you can bond for it, that is only if you're going underground, the, and, and I believe that you will be giving one of those permits, you will have to apply for one of those permits in this case as well, but that just goes through the engineering office, the ordinance I provided is pursuant to section 3.007 of the Charter, and this is for when there's an actual, I hate to use the word obstruction, but, like an obstruction in the right of way, or like in the case of McCardovan Apartments from recently, which that ordinance was passed under the same section of the Charter with the overhang on the street, basically anytime a piece of a building is pushing out into our right of way, whether it's in the sidewalk, or whether it's hanging over the sidewalk, it, there needs to be a permit from the council pursuant to section 3.007, so. So basically what's going to happen is, is there's only going to be traffic going one way, the other way, and no parking, so there's traffic both ways and no parking on the street.
You good with it? 'Cause it's your district.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that, I just wanna make sure everybody has what they need and-
So when the hospital's completed, that, that's gonna be the main entrance, right?
Lafayette Street will be the entrance way from Broad Street, down to, Broadway down to Broad Street, that's a long way, Broadway down to the front entrance, around to Cornelia out onto Ruskin Street, our front entrance and our canopy will be on about where the Wool Corp building was.
And as you probably saw that I put in the ordinance, at that time that we abandoned the street and conveyed to NVHS, the permit will be moved, because we don't own the right of way anymore.
I've got one, one request, when you make that entrance on Lafayette, can you make it the general Lafayette entrance?
Don't listen to him, he just-
Well, so one of the things, not to get off topic, but to answer that question, you know, a lot of people have expressed concern about preserving as much history of that neighborhood as possible, we have been able to secure artifacts from some of the buildings, not all of them have artifacts per se, but, you know, the, the cement nameplates, for example, we've saved all them, stored them, and preserved them, and we wanna work with a landscape architect, and quite frankly, a couple of local art groups have talked to us about how we can convey the exterior of the building in a way that not only preserves some of those artifacts, but also pays tribute to the history that's occurred in that area, whether we'll call it General Lafayette or not, I can't say that we'll do that, but that's an idea, we've got a couple of local historians provide us a lot of thought on that, and very, very reasonable thoughts.
I see that.
That wasn't a bad question at all.
Any other questions?
That was a hero.
Can I just make one other comment if you don't mind?
Sure.
So there's, there's a number of you that are new, I, I don't know if you saw my email or not.
I did, I just have not responded.
And I realize you're all busy, and I know there's rules on how many of you can meet and how often together, why not, so I wouldn't wanna violate any of your regulations, but I'd make myself available to any one of you at any time, to either answer questions to the residents that you represent, or the questions that you might have about our project, you know, it's been in the news for five years now, and, and I certainly wanna make sure that I had that opportunity, or you had that opportunity.
And the website, do you wanna share the website address that shows a lot of the process and what you're doing?
Well, our website is mvhealthsystem.org, so if you'll play a look at that, we also have a time lapse.
That information on that.
There's a time lapse camera now that's on top of the Delta Hotel, so you can see it working, but again, I would offer that opportunity for people who would like to talk, at your convenience.
I do get the Darlene's Digest.
And we have the Darlene's Digest and just the facts that comes out weekly, if you're not on, I believe we've got everyone on that as well, again, sometimes things come out from various sources that contradict that, again, that's my job to help answer those questions for folks.
Thank you so much for coming in to talk about it, and thank you, Kate, does anybody have any more questions, or are you ready to bring this to the table tonight?
I'll bring it to the table.
Well, I, I did, it would have to be unanimous tonight.
Anybody?
I'm just, why?
First time it comes out.
Okay, yeah.
So if there is any questions regarding it, or you need more information before you vote on it, or if you're planning on voting no, if you could, I just, yeah.
If it's impossible, we can keep, uh, uh, push this in committee?
Okay.
All right.
Can I ask, what is the timeframe, like, how quickly, I do need to control, Frank, so how quickly do you need to get this?
We have a, we have a little bit of time, I don't want to waste this time.
Well, you need to, look, I believe the hospital is-
To our next meeting, just?
Hoping to get the building permits by March.
We, we, we do need to get our building permits in March, for a variety of reasons, as you might have noticed by driving through, the last building on the west end of the property came down today, or started to come down, so there are just two buildings left on the east end, but once was Benji's and once was Clemente's, once they come down, the crew's ready to start doing the soil stabilization.
If council doesn't mind, I'd like to refer it to committee, to our next meeting.
I think also though, that you would be able to start cutting into the road, you know, by applying for a road cut permit, and the encroachment permit isn't strictly necessary until you start building in such a way that it's possibly obstructing public access to the right of way, so you can-
So with that understanding, we could wait till your next meeting.
Okay.
Councillor Miola, if you would like to put this in committee, ensure that you introduce it on the floor and then place it in committee, that way the next time, it's not its first introduction.
It's your district, so just-
Okay, well, you, you asked to refer.
Well, can I ask a question?
Of course.
What, what is the, what is, where do we have a question on, is there anything, or any?
Just, just a couple of the permit questions in the legal part that they're gonna go over, or we go on, that's it.
Okay.
Anything else, any other questions for me?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, the next one is resolution number five, this one will have to have the Thursday roll waived on it, it is for Spectrum?
Yeah, I would really, if the council would, I'll take a part in sponsoring this, it's something simple, instead of making the calls, we're hoping that sponsors just gives the people their rebate.
I agree.
So, um, that's, that's simple, matter of fact, this also, I did see a editorial in the paper after this was submitted, quite similar to this, so what we're trying to do here, and basically it's just asking for Spectrum to make the effort to credit the people that were out of internet for a while, so.
Anyone else want to?
I want to see it credited as well.
For council?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
The next one is a resolution to reinstitute the City of Utica Youth Common Council, discuss that one, do you wanna?
Yeah, so, before I went to college, while in high school, we had a youth council, the resolution was there, but I thought to do another resolution to provide some teeth to the structure and the format, give the city council some sort of standing by which to operate, when I started, we, we kinda made all of that ourselves, this resolution is a little bit more meatier than what was originally passed before, it also is two-fold, while this reinstates the youth common council, provides a structure for it, if there's any questions to it, you can ask those, but it, it is a nine-member council memoring, mirroring the council that we have now, six council members from particular districts, and three at large, with one youth clerk appointed, the other aspect is, which is the other resolution, but I'll highlight now is that the city would appoint an advisor to the youth common council, which is purely voluntary, no salary or money associated with it, it's just a person from the community, which I'll give her name, Stephanie Highland, who's a member of the Mira's Access and Inclusion Committee, she's also runs the Pathways to Justice program for Natty County, she would be the advisor, at least that's my recommendation, to have her as the advisor to the youth council, the resolution is pretty self-explanatory, but it just provides information in terms of how the youth council could be structured, should be structured, given my experience with the youth council, and given how other youth councils across the state have been operating, so it's a positive to provide young people, mainly high schoolers in the City of Utica, to be able to work on the youth council, get experience, and also provide the common council in the city with advice about legislation, or, or ideas that they may have pertinent to young people.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know you want- I know you want us, common council members, to point these persons. I'm wondering if we could even work with the school district.
Districts.
Got three districts.
Correct.
Got Notre Dame, Charter School, and Proctor. I'm talking just Proctor right now.
Okay.
And maybe get, have them get involved. Maybe even have a school election, just like, you know, a regular election. And they could submit their names, obviously, if they're interested. And they could have their own council. But actually, the school district handled why they have their meetings or maybe they can do it during the day while they're in school. Just a thought.
Yeah, so I do like that. The other aspect, I think to start, it'd be good to have them appointed. So what I have here is that the advisor would form a committee of five, no more than seven. They'll receive applications, vet the submissions, and then ultimately submit it to each member of the common council. Now, also, I put here that members of the common council would be ex officio members to that selection committee whenever that advisor calls that committee. So you'll be able to sit in on any meeting that you want. But I did it through an application process where they can write a, as a thing of that nature. And I'm willing to, to look at working with the school districts. But I do know that sometimes it's a little bit more bureaucracy there than here. And things can kind of get jumbled as to who can be in the building with youth. And then it might get even more murky if we do allow Notre Dame and the Charter School with young people to be a part of the council. Could they, could they even meet in like Proctor or something like that? So I just thought it'd be here, but then we just come here.
So can you just explain to me? I'm a little confused on this now. So how does this work? Where, who supervises these meetings? Is it something that we need to attend? Are they done here? Like, what's the plan on, how does the whole thing really work?
How does the one work that we've had, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but how does the one work that we have currently?
Really, it was just a committee, the old one. I remember, matter of fact, I helped sponsor him. Delvin was there. He was a young buck back then. And we had a good time going there. He was, he was very well spoken back then, as he improved quite torrentially to his now. And basically, it was, it was actually named the City of Utica Youth Council Committee. So basically, it was a committee that Delvin headed. And he put a few of his colleagues together that wanted to be a part of it. And they gave us the opinion of the young community on some of the issues. They also put a couple of reports they wrote us. And I think it was very well done back then. I'm for 100% the way this, this one is a little bit confusing, some of the parts that you put in. I just want to straight couple of times. You've got one year for a term and you've got two years over here for other terms. There's a couple of things that fight each other on the terms. If you're looking at the first page and...
Advisor is...
Advisor is two years.
The advisor is two years and the, and the member is one year.
So this is the member part of the advisor?
No, the advisor is the adult assigned to advise.
So you only want the adult to have one year and you want the members to have two?
Second piece of legislation.
Reason why I have the members one year is because with high school, they change every year. It could be a senior this year and off to college next year. Have the advisor two years because of the situation of the council.
And the other part is the CDVG funding? We have no control of that.
I know. I talked to the mayor about that. It is, again, a resolution of recommendation. I'm willing to amend that to, to say that in the event that city funds, and again, I met with the mayor about this, that if there is any event, there are city funds, mainly I'm thinking through the youth bureau, that if the youth common council had an idea, you know, something small, a couple hundred dollars, they would be able to utilize that seed money to do an idea or project that they have. So I'm willing to amend the CDVG aspect of it. But there are programming dollars.
Yeah, sure.
So how often do they meet? What do they talk about? What do they...
So when we were council, we met, we met monthly.
That's your original calendar.
When we were a council, we met monthly. And the meetings were ran by the youth council president, which I was. We had a youth clerk, which shadowed the clerk a lot, learned a lot of those technical skills. We met monthly. We talked about issues pertinent to youth. It might have been parks. It might have been, at the time, job employment opportunities. We did a toy drive. We, we worked in the summer with the parks. So all of the things that were according to you. We went to all needs to advocate for more educational funding. Then you got additional $6 million for state aid directly through our efforts as a youth council. So...
They were a team to reckon with.
Yeah, so, so we did a lot of, a lot of those types of things.
I want to support this and I just want to, I mean, if the best evidence we can have of what good things something like this can do sits right here, right? So this is what happens when you...
The structure was different. You have to understand. The structure was different from what it was then. And if it was effective then, then what he was using, I don't see why it's ineffective now.
This is, this is not...
Who was the adult?
There wasn't one.
We, we all joined when Delvin needed something down City Hall. And we helped him.
So, so the thing is, this is not separate. This is, and I want to be clear, this is not a different governing structure than what we had previously. I could pull up the old bylaw that we operated by. This is just codifying the way we operate. If you look at the resolution, it doesn't say anything about how you should operate. So what I did was, I just put on paper the way that we operated as a youth council back then. That's, that's all.
So the new youth council would still have to decide for themselves, just as we have to decide for ourselves how to run ourselves? And the new youth council would have to decide themselves?
Well, that's what we had to do, but this, this...
Spells it out.
Right, right, right. That way, we started from ground zero, you know? We had, we had Constable Millen others to help us, President Morehouse at the time. But we didn't have any roadmap. So this is just to provide a small roadmap to kind of get them all the way.
Well, if the language to remove the CDVG, I'm good with that. If you want to amend it.
Oh, I got a question. The advisor, who's in the, you said you wanted to appoint somebody?
Yes.
Who? Got a name?
Stephanie Highland is... Yes. I don't know, we wanted to bring her up to, if we could.
Yes.
Stephanie Highland is, again, on the Mayor's Access and Inclusion Committee.
Wait, wait, wait.
H E I L A N D.
She is instrumental. Some of you might have seen this solution summit going on. She's instrumental working on that committee to mitigate some of the issues of gun violence and other things that we have. She is, you run the Pathway to Justice program. How many young people is that normally every summer?
Um, anywhere between 50 and 100.
50 and 100 young people actively seeking about how they can, in the future, be involved in our police, be officers of our UPD and our fire department. So she runs a tremendous program. And it's somebody that I think has the drive and vision. And in fact, the deputy clerk may attest to this, but she wanted to do a youth council prior to me even writing the resolution. Last year, she was very active in reaching out to the clerk's office to see how we can have a youth council. So I think Stephanie is great and she can introduce herself even more, so.
That was last year?
That I was calling, yeah. I called quite a few times, but they kept saying that they didn't know where the bylaws were. So Delvin, put them back together for me.
So if you could just explain yourself, who you are briefly, yeah?
I think that you did it.
He did it next to the chat.
He did.
Okay, hold there.
How old am I? 27?
27. You look very, I thought you were 18.
Oh, thank you.
I got a question. So when you draw these youth from the city, it's just not going to be one school? It's going to be Notre Dame, Charter School?
Yes.
Doesn't have to be based on schools and it could be based on area, right?
Well, yeah.
I think it would have to be if it were going to mirror.
So, so what I wrote was that, that the youth, this had to be a good standing in high school in the City of Utica. That they had to live within the City of Utica. So that opens up for, you know, Charter Schools and Notre Dame.
It's a resolution. You can amend it as you go. If you have any problems with it, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's not...
How are we going to word the CDVG part? If you guys want to...
Can we just, can we, can we just amend, just take out?
There's also F.
So, yes, so I want to take out the first sentence in F.
Okay.
Keep the last sentence in theme.
Right underneath that.
And the...
The small portion of the city funds, I would just take out the and/or community development block.
So you want to strike that, right?
Yeah, and/or community block, reprogramming dollars.
So we're striking up?
You're striking F, you're striking the first sentence of F? And then under be it further resolved, you are striking and/or community development block grant reprogramming dollars.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion on the table?
What's the age requirement? Is there an age?
17 and down, according to...
Yeah, 17 and down.
So does that mean they have to age out when they, if they turn 18 in the middle of their high school year and they're on the path?
You want a six-year-old there? I mean, you want...
No, that wasn't my, that wasn't my point.
Oh, if they turn 18 and then they have to...
That's a little, you're right.
Right. But what if they turn, what if they're...
Why don't you just say high school?
But what if they turn...
Why don't you say, or 10 or 12 or whatever?
I don't know. Should be a junior and above.
Junior and above? Are you okay with that with Delvin?
Stephanie, what do you think? Is that too restrictive? Would you rather there be sophomore and above?
We, I mean, I personally work mainly with juniors and seniors. I think that they're more mature.
Right, right.
But there are definitely younger kids that could be interested. So I think it goes either way, if you want to be restricted or not.
So who are...
I, I work with high school kids. And I think the juniors are at that level where they're more, like you said, more mature.
Juniors and above?
I think juniors.
Who are juniors and above?
Where are you there?
Uh, composition.
There we go.
It's on the first line. So we have to amend that to juniors and above.
Who are juniors and above upon the point?
Above 217?
Could you just also, juniors and seniors?
That's the only thing above.
Okay.
You said a great point average, too.
No, 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 just good standard.
Good standard. Can't be damn near.
Can this be for council? Think that's a be a good showing with all the amendments? For our youth, young people or not?
Yeah.
I would support it.
Nice job.
Are we, are you planning on making amendments or?
Yeah.
Well, so you don't have to amend this on the floor because it's not introduced.
I'll do anything in here. Just agree to it.
You could just, you could just introduce it.
Then it has to be read into the record with those amendments, yeah?
Right, right.
And we're making them here, which...
You don't have to amend it on the floor.
You don't. All right. So who's going to read it to the record? You guys know our amendments? You guys all set with the amendments?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next one is the resolution appointing.
It just says, Stephanie advisor, and the bottom one says no money.
Her last name is...
How do you spell it? H E I L A N D.
You said fingerprint, right?
That was it, right?
Yep.
H E I L A N D.
Who's reading this? You or the clerk on the floor?
Well, he can decide whoever he wants at that point.
Clerk says he wants me to...
Okay, so... There's a couple pieces of legislation that were tabled. Resolution Number Two, it's approving the granting of overhead utility easement for Edward Street. That one is... That was, no, that was mine. I wasn't here. He held it off for me. I'm comfortable with it. If anybody else had any questions with it.
We had copied the legislation.
Yeah, I remember that.
Edward Street easement, overhead easement.
Eventually, I, I'll come up with a different system as I go by, yeah.
Monthly.
What is it? Tell me.
It says, whereas Matt Brewing Company is a New York corporation having an address of 811 Edward Street, Utica, New York, 13502, whereas Matt Brewing Company requires an overhead utility bridge across Edward Street, a public street and right of way owned by and maintained by the City of Utica. And whereas Matt Brewing Company requires a permanent easement from the City of Utica on lands more specifically described in the attached grant of easement for the purpose of constructing and maintaining an overhead facility that conducts utilities for its business operations. Now, be it resolved that the mayor of the City of Utica is authorized, representative, to authorize, to execute the attached grant of easement and any other necessary document to effectuate this resolution.
So this is in your district?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's good with you?
Yes, but Burmaster held it off for me.
Can you just, let's, when you say overhead utility bridge, I'm having a hard time picturing. What does that look like?
So they're going to have to do the same thing with the hospital. It's just where they have all their utilities, they go overhead. So it's like a bridge. I don't know how to fully explain it to you.
Accessible walkway, slade bridge to bring your utilities from one building to the other.
Yeah, yeah. But I didn't know Kate was here to fully explain.
She gave us a little synopsis.
Yeah.
Like, did you want to speak on that one?
I don't think you know that.
Like, how big are we talking? Like, is it big enough you could walk across it? Is it a bridge you could walk across?
So it's not going to be huge. It's for just their utilities. I don't know exactly if it's going to be covered. I know it's something that, so like their fiber optic runs through it and their telephons run through it. Maybe some water, maybe some gas, maybe some electric. Correct. It's a big conduit.
Just utilities.
It's a big conduit through which...
Just utilities. And then obviously, people are going to have to get up there in order to maintain it.
Well, to maintain it.
Correct, right.
So, I mean, it's not something that's going to...
We're not doing anything illegal. It's for the safety of the people.
Correct.
Check this out.
This is, this is making it more safe for the people.
What else?
The next one is Resolution Number 10. It's approving the granting of an easement for gas service to Niagara Mohawk for the NiPA visitor centers of Utica Zoo. Did you want to speak on that one? It's something that they wanted us to...
Yeah, I have not put the whole thing together yet. I have not talked to NiPA, but I know we talked about it in general. Dave Short, Dave, you back here? Dave, come on. I talked to Dave last Thursday about it. And about the gas easement for up there. He actually walked in with them, so I'll bring him up.
Sit down, Sean, you sit down.
No. So we're talking about the gas, I remember we talked about it last Thursday, how it was spied.
Yes.
So just brief to council, you did your walkthrough with people up there?
Uh, basically, the Niwa needs to bring up a gas line from, uh, lower Parkway.
Yeah, already.
Up across the Parkway Mall.
This is where it may be?
Yes, and then up, up by, it's, it's an easement off of, as you wrote. Uh, they're gonna tunnel it, or they're gonna burrow up through.
What size?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. But it, they're gonna bore through and bring it up to the building.
So it's not gonna be, nothing's gonna be seen.
So if this is a gas line, why isn't the next company doing it?
What is?
They break, they break, they break for a certain point and the Niwa, they have to take it from there. That's something that they have worked out.
They gotta fund it.
Okay. It was the same way with the electrical, too.
Okay.
Nothing visible.
Nothing visible?
Nothing visible, it's all underground.
Yeah, I held it, remember, I held it about a month ago.
Why do they need it?
Uh, that's what's gonna fuel the heat for the building.
Okay.
Is that what they're doing now out there?
Yes.
That's electrical.
They're already doing it.
Yes, it's building up. They just need to heat it now. They got the electrical service going in next, make the elevators work and the lights work.
Have we consulted with Central New York Conservancy? Do they have any opinion on that?
Yes, we already, uh, we're here. I had the Central Conservancy here, the Tribune, as well as all the Niwa people, we discussed everything. And the, uh, the optics and the scenery needs to be redeveloped again, which we did. They both came to an agreement with size tree for them to put back there. Not the small ceilings, but actually three, two to three-inch caliber tree. And they're gonna have to take care of it and it's gonna be done right.
At, at the cost of Niwa, Niwa's gonna pay for it.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, we had everybody there. Conservancy was, you know, in particular because you're about Roscoe County Park, so. Right?
And it's not something you're ready to?
I'm ready to go, I mean.
You're ready to go?
I'm ready to move it. I just, you know, I wanted to have Dave here.
This requires a motion taken from the table.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good.
Anything else?
I got the thing for the, the bus.
Okay. How long ago did you talk to the?
Wait a minute, judge, update him with the school bus legislation.
Oh, I got that. Uh, I'd like to form, somebody missing.
Jack.
Jack.
You're right.
Jack.
Oh, no, Delvin had to go get his key.
Oh, well.
Had to get his teeth.
Key, key.
Oh.
I'd like to, well, I don't need Delvin for that. First thing is, in the budget, you'll find, I think if I, the coal is gonna be in the budget, right?
Yes, it has to be.
You're gonna find in the budget a coal. And that means that your cost of living increase that you're all gonna get because when the coal comes out, uh, you're, it's statutory, you've gotta take it. You can't take it out of the budget, so every, every once in a while, councilmen start talking about, oh, I don't want it, you've got to take it. And if you don't want it, it's very simple, when you get it, like we told some councilman past, you wanna give the money back to the city, just write them a check. But you don't touch the coal in the check.
We understand.
And first, we have four new people, and this is statutory, you don't have a choice there.
That's number one.
Number two, where's Delvin? Delvin?
He went to get his keys.
Went to get his key.
He'll be back.
Key from where?
Key, his key.
His key was.
Oh, uh, I want you to know that you all know about this school bus camera issue. For the last four or five days, Don Jerez, myself, and today, it was yesterday, the mayor, and Charlie Pram, we had a, a local law prepared. Because they wanted to do a pilot program where they put the cameras on the bus. And the reason why the city's involved is because it follows vehicle traffic law, eleven seventy four, about giving out the ticket, okay, it's a school bus, so we're involved. Now, they wanted us to join the pilot program, uh, because it's the City of Utica. As you know, the City of Utica, uh, is, uh, cut out of the camera program by law.
Statute law.
And also there's, if you want the camera, City Utica has to pay for it, that's what I mean. So anyway, Don Jerez and I, we put this thing together, and I met with Charlie yesterday, and I was the mayor, because I know where he was going, because it's a lot of work. We put this whole thing together, and then I met with Frank, and what went on with him because of the finance law thing. The statute really says the City of Utica by law has to pay for this. So I'm being told by the school people that, don't worry, the fund is gonna pay for this, it's not gonna cost the city anything. I said, well, that's nice. Well, I spoke with Charlie yesterday, he says, let's not do local law, let's do ordinance, because they're easier to get them through. I said, all right, but that, and he said, well, some of the language will change. I said, okay. I said, he, I said, but then I said to Frank, I said, no, Frank, not that we, I don't trust these people. I said, we have to have an intergovernmental.
Agreement.
Agreement, where they indemnify us in writing that if there is any cost, they indemnify us, pay us, because by law, we're liable for it. And they can tell me I'm not gonna pay for it. So I went up to the mayor and I says, how do you feel about all this? He says, I'm for putting the, the cameras on the bus. I said, well, and I said, and he says, I've talked to the superintendent, but I haven't talked to the superintendent, I just talked to their lawyer. So I said, okay, when, Mr. Mayor, you get to the point where you and the superintendent make a deal, then Charlie and I will take care of the legislation. But we've gotta have an intergovernmental relation, uh, agreement where we're indemnified. Because if, if there are costs, the statute says we're supposed to pay them, the state statute. So we don't wanna pay them because they told us they're gonna pay it. Everybody else gets to the county, not the city. So I just wanted you to know that for you, if you read that in the papers, say, well, where are we on the school bus thing? Well, we're, we've been on it for the last four or five days, it's been a lot of work. Don Jerez, I gotta say, he did a lot of work on this thing, and even on the holiday, he called me, called me on Sunday, we worked out a lot of details, so, uh, we've got the law. The law's all set, just gonna convert it to an ordinance. And we haven't got the intergovernmental agreement yet, and that is what has to be done through the mayor and the superintendent of schools. So if you're concerned about that school bus camera thing, it's not something, we've already done it. And you'll get it at some time if, if we can get the agreement all together.
The superintendent.
And we're coming.
That will come down from the law department?
Uh?
It'll come down from the law department?
Yeah, well, it's already up there. I did it, I already brought.
Well, my point is, they don't have to introduce it. It's gonna come down from the law department.
Well, no, they don't have to do it, uh, but it's, yeah, it'll come down in the form of an ordinance, because it already was a local law.
Right.
And she drafted, we all did it, then we, I sent it up to Charlie, then I told him I wanted to have a meeting on this before I put it on the floor. Because I don't know where everybody is on this thing. I don't wanna embarrass the council. We passed up the table. Where's the finance thing? And of course Frank, that's the first thing he said, who's gonna pay for this? I said, well, they said they're gonna pay for it, but.
You, you need to get.
Who'll do it?
Our superintendent and our mayor together, if you don't mind, on a councilment.
I talked about the school.
Yeah.
I told you about the.
As soon as possible.
And I told you about the.
And God bless you.
What's the other thing?
I wanna make something about you here.
Oh, I told you about the.
When I get your time, I'll get on their bid list.
That's the only report I have here.
Can I ask a question really quick on this issue, because we were all, I was really sort of hot, flat-footed on this question of the school bus. Suddenly we found out that we are exempted because our school district is wholly contained within the city boundaries. Could we, is there some mechanism whereby there's somebody from the county ledge and somebody from this council who regularly meets to just sort of make sure that we are, things like this don't kind of fall through the.
It was state law, you can't do anything with it. It was state law.
No, 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 but, but it would've been nice to know before the county passed their legislation, that's all I mean, it's like a communication device.
It would've been nice.
Whereby the county says, hey, hey, heads up, there's something coming your way, uh, so that we're not just happening what did happen, which is that, you know. I didn't find out about it until I got the phone call from Amy Rock.
I don't think the county passed it yet.
No, but, but it was already, but it was on their agenda and we didn't even know about it. It would've been nice if we had some mechanism whereby the county ledge is saying, hey, council, heads up, you got something coming down the road.
I'll inform some of our legislators there to inform us quickly.
Something like that.
Excellent.
It just would've been nice to not find out from the OD. Yeah, not find out from the OD, that's all.
We're gonna need, um, I think that should, they do all our census work for us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they'll be, you're gonna have to redistrict, and you're gonna find it, everything you can get out of that.
Could you put something on paper that could do it forever?
And I get all that, and see how you're gonna go to districts.
Right, right, right.
So we did talk.
Yeah, I just, it just would've been nice not to, I found out.
Well, I didn't want this thing to go bad, so we wouldn't be doing it like.
Well, sure, 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 no, I appreciate that you're on.
Wow.
Anyone have anything else you wanna talk about?
So.
Meeting adjourned. Second?
Thank you, Major.
This meeting will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
McNeil, Burmester, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice, Williamson, Lamedego, DeBrango, Galemy, nine present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business this evening is public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak on behalf of the property at three oh one, three nineteen dot five five one nine four Pelletieri Ave or nine twenty eight Lansing Street. Do we have a motion to remove ordinance two, sale of property at three oh one dash three nineteen dot five five dash one dash nine four Pelletieri Ave from committee? We have a motion from Williamson, second, second from Beatrice. Any opposed? All right, ordinance two is the sale of property at three oh one dash three nineteen dot five five dash one dash nine four Pelletieri Ave to Hassan Katschovitch in the amount of one thousand dollars by the Urban Renewal Agency. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Ordinance six is the sale of property at nine twenty eight Lansing Street. Do we have a motion to remove from committee? We have a motion from DeBrango, second from McNeil. Any opposed? Ordinance six is the sale of property at nine twenty eight Lansing Street to Eden Dradjovic in the amount of seven thousand dollars by the Urban Renewal Agency. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Thank you. Public hearing, and the sale of those properties is now closed. Next order of business is public comment period. We have eight people signed up to speak this evening, which means everyone will receive roughly three point seven five minutes. Uh, the first person signed up to speak is Peter Bianco. Please come forward. Thank you. It's three minutes forty-five seconds.
Thank you. So I'm here this evening because.
Hold, hold on one second, sorry. The common council has provided you a copy of section three two four four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and then you may begin.
Peter Bianco, and, uh, I'm here this evening because I heard that the council would be voting on closing Lafayette Street. And I was here to tell you that I'm opposed to that idea. And, um, I did sit in on the previous meeting, so what I heard in the, uh, pre-meeting there is that, uh, you guys would be keeping the street going with two-way traffic. Uh, I'm still concerned about, um, the permitting of being able to cut the road and permitting, uh, for building permits for the hospital. I don't know if everyone's aware, but the lawsuit with the hospital is ongoing. And as far as I'm aware, the latest is that the MVHS attorneys, along with the city attorney, uh, had made an attempt to move this case from Albany Supreme Court to Anita County Supreme Court, and that was denied. Um, and so now they're asking to, uh, re-argue the case. I don't know if the, uh, where that stands, if, if it's been granted or denied. I think it's still up in the air, but, um, it seems as though the whole case should be, uh, being decided within the next few months. So I would ask the council to not allow anything to move forward with the hospital until the lawsuit concludes. And, uh, as far as, uh, if there's any thoughts of closing Lafayette Street, my concern is that Citation Services, a business that's been open for thirty years, is still there and it's still operating. And I wouldn't wanna see, uh, that road be closed and affect, uh, that business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Natalie Williams, if you could please come forward. Thank you. Oh, the common council has provided you a copy of section three two four four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and then you'll have three minutes and forty-five seconds this evening.
My name is Natalie Williams. Okay, I am a homeowner, and I hope to stay as a homeowner. I purchased a property from the City of Utica Urban Renewal Agency, eighteen Stuben Park. I have had all manner of blockades from the city itself in being able to obtain the proper permits in order to get a certificate of occupancy so that I can live there. The details of which you will be reading about, um, later, but basically I'm gonna be appealing to the Urban Renewal Agency, who in a December twelfth meeting decided that they were gonna take the property back, revert the property, claiming that I did not have the right permits and that, uh, I didn't do what I was supposed to do within a year's time, and that by contract, they can take the property back from me. In the meantime, I've been beating back crackheads, fixing up all sorts of things in this property, investing my life savings, and, um, at the point where I realize that I'm not gonna be able to complete this and ask them, with plenty of time for them to give me a six-month extension, they keep on refusing, stalling, refusing, refusing my money to buy a building permit, and then claiming that it's all my fault and that I am incapable of handling a project management. That's untrue. I actually have a degree, well, first of all, I'm a trained science teacher, and two, I've got a degree in sustainable architecture. Um, as it turns out, the building, which I, was definitely what we would call a lemon, a hoarder's nightmare, stuffed with junk. You barely could see the walls. It took about six months just to get all the junk out of there. Got people working on it finally, because I was blocked from the city from actually getting contractors, and they did all sorts of serocious things behind my back, which they will lie to your face and claim that they did not. But basically, there was a plot afoot to stop me from successfully renovating this building in time such that they could steal it back. In the meantime, what happened was they recognized that the building is probably a historic monument. It is part of the former Utica Arsenal, which, uh, was built in eighteen sixty-two. It's a support structure for that, and further, it is likely to have been a stop on the Underground Railroad. They wanna take that building back, either for those purposes or for the more obvious ones of just taking it back, stealing my, my labor and effort and money for a year, and turning around and selling it to some gentrification, in some gentrification scheme. I think that all of you should take action against that. Allow me to do what I promised to do, create a historically preserved building for the City of Utica that they would be proud of and that I would live in without all these backstabbing machinations that are going on right before your eyes in the City of Utica. I've appealed to all kinds of political people who are supposed to be on my side. They turn askance, okay? They're looking the other way, they're ready to line their pockets with whatever they can out of eighteen Stuben Park.
Excuse me, you have about fifteen seconds left.
It's all gonna be online, utica phoenix dot net. I've got copies of the paper, I've got copies of the appeal that I made to the mayor, and this is not over.
Thank you. L S L. The common council has provided you a copy of section three two four four, public comment period rule. Will you abide by this?
Yes, sir.
You'll have, state your name and you'll have three minutes and forty-five seconds this evening.
L S L. I reside here in God's country, Utica, New York. About the second meeting in January, I stood up here and I said to the council, you're a new council. The old council was terrible. People looked, oh, are you nuts? Well, three years ago, Mr. Ron Vincent introduced legislation to take Charlestown off tax rolls. Nothing was done by the other councils. You people have been in offices going into the second month, already you're working on, tonight, you're gonna vote to take Charlestown off the tax rolls. It's nothing but a big headache, and I wanna thank you. Keep pushing, keep going, keep doing. Our mayor's staff, chief. This shooting has gotta stop. Somehow, some way, we have to get to the judges, we have to get to the law. It has to be enforced and be more strict, yeah, more strict. These people break the law, they have to pay a price, a penalty. Not just a slap on the wrist and say, come on, guys, you shot three times, one here, one there, one there, that's BS. Police department has got their hands full. When the time comes when you need them, and they're chasing after some hooligan that is shooting shots at houses, you'll realize why and what I'm saying. Fire department, I can't praise you enough, and I'm not going to. Seems like every time I get up here and praise the fire department, about eleven thirty, quarter twelve at night, there'll be a second alarm. I say, how? I say how good they've been doing, how quiet it's been, the fire prevention, et cetera, et cetera. They said, I was contacted, "Please, L, don't praise us no more." So I'm not going to praise you, chief. But this council, as I said, you're doing a great job. I can really stand back and say that I'm proud to say that you members represent our council for our city. Please keep up the good work. God bless you. To the hundreds of thousands in attendance, God bless you, God bless your family, to the millions at home watching on TV, God bless them. God bless our city, our state, our country. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. I said, "Thank you." Bill Tru, if you could please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of section three-two-four-four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am, Mr. President.
Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes and forty-five seconds. Thanks.
Oh, it's a little longer than usual. My name is Bill Tru, lifelong resident of the City of Utica. What I want to speak tonight briefly about is the heart and soul of this community, which is the City of Utica. Growing up in this area, when I was a kid, you never had to worry much about security because it was a safer time. Our parents could go to bed and literally leave their doors unlocked, the windows open on a hot summer night, nobody would bother you. Unfortunately, today, due to security issues and people committing violent crimes out in the streets, it makes it very hard for people to feel safe today. Now, I know Saturday, we're having a gun violence symposium. I believe it's going to be at the Rec Center from ten to one on Saturday, and I'm asking that all of us get together on that day. Are there easy solutions? No, there isn't, there may never be. But I'm asking the Utica Police Department, members of the community, to please join us. If we don't become part of the solution, we're part of the problem. And what does that show to our children that are growing up here? They're looking to us to be their role models. I love this community, I always have. Like I say, I've grown up here, I was born and raised here, and I'm asking that we get together and not jeopardize our security, but to renew our security and have peace in this community. Thank you very much.
Donna Beckett, if you please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of section three-two-four-four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I do.
All right. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes and forty-five seconds.
My name is Donna Beckett, and first of all, I do have to ask if you'll bear with me, my allergies are bothering me today, so I am grateful I have a little bit more time because then I can read my notes and speak slowly in complete sentences. So anyway, I'll begin by saying I am grateful that I was able to spend time in the caucus, and I did come here because I did want to hear what Bob Schofield might have to say. And I'm going to assume that all of you know that it's not a done deal. You know, as much as you may hear about and see what the hospital is doing there, it doesn't mean it's a done deal. And for whatever reason that they are going along with it and keep doing what they're doing, perhaps they're being naive, or perhaps they got their fingers crossed in regards to the lawsuit that is still very active. As a matter of fact, for the brief time that he spoke there, even that brief time, he had mentioned something that was not accurate. He had brought up a comment regarding the historical artifacts and how the architect had reached out to two local historians and gotten a great deal of information. What he didn't say, and maybe not even know, that those two local historians, after the meeting, after a few months, they got to such a point that they had, because they had been dismissed, that the architects had been dismissive towards them. So you heard what may have sounded very nice, and it wasn't very nice. Speaking of local history, the Landmark Society of Greater Utica, for the first two years of this four-and-a-half-year battle, were neutral. They didn't get involved. It wasn't their point to get involved, it was early, they wanted to see how and if it was possible to integrate historical buildings, and after two years, they realized they were getting nowhere, no cooperation, so they joined the lawsuit and the battle. Also, when it comes to the C-COR, the C-COR itself processes, it's not just land, soil, water, or historical buildings, it's other things. It's lost tax base, it can be lost street grid, and one of the biggest issues about C-COR is, is there an alternate site? Could this be done someplace else with a lot less harm? A lot less harm to historical buildings, lost tax base, lost street grid. So it's one of the primary reasons why it was established in the first place. I'm old enough to remember when C-COR was implemented, so. So now we'll get back to that lawsuit that you've heard about, and again, I'll repeat it and try to be quick. There are four. There's Mohawk Valley Health System, there is Utica Planning Board, there is the Dormitory Authority of New York, and there is Scenic and Historic Agency of New York. And there are seven defendants, excuse me, seven plaintiffs. No hospital downtown, Jim Brack, there's Brett Truitt, who's a property owner, there's Joseph Serini, who's a property and a business owner there, there's O'Brien Plumbing and Heating on Columbia Street, there's Joseph Bettini, who was a former Noddy County historian, there is the Landmark Society of Greater Utica, and there's Frank Montecarlo, who's a retired administrative law judge, and I believe...
Ms. Beckett, you have fifteen seconds.
Okay, oh, okay. So anyway, so the lawsuit was filed in April, and they have not won. They've lost several rulings, most recent one in December, that says you have to show the merits of what you did, and they're not able to show the merits. So it's far from being done, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Laura and Robert Zalum, please come forward. It's Zalum. No, it's just Zalum. Wow, they're trying to add, they're trying to add a few syllables.
Please don't.
The common council has provided you a copy of section three-two-four-four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, we read it previously.
All right, you will have four minutes, you may begin after you state your name. Thank you.
I am Laura Zalum.
Robert Zalum.
We live at twelve-ten Sherman Drive, and we are here tonight because we want every single person in every area of our city government to know that Sherman Drive was affected by the ten thirty-one twenty nineteen floods, just as South Utica was. We, our block, and several houses surrounding our block suffered losses. Our cellar, including two crawl spaces filled with water up to the rafters, from the cement floor to the ceiling, the top of our cellar stairs. Surrounding our house was water. Our house was like a tiny island in a huge sea. Thigh-level water filled our backyard, our side yards, our front yard, our driveway, the street, and across the street to the top of the MVCC berm. We are so very grateful to the Utica Fire Department, the Utica Police Department, and the Utica Department of Public Works. They came and they helped us. The Utica Fire Department checked on us several times and then stated the best thing would be to evacuate our home. We waited through thigh-deep water to evacuate, and as we left, DPW crews were there on Sherman Drive, trying to locate sewers. Every item stored in our cellar was destroyed. We lost our power, our furnace, our hot water, our washer, our dryer, our freezer, and our dehumidifier. We lost all three of our cars that were parked in our driveway. As the water rose to engine level and they were rocking back and forth, we lost our air conditioner, we lost many items stored in our garage, we lost most items stored in our backyard sheds. When the water receded, our driveway, sheds, garage, and cellar were filled with inches of sludge, mud, smelly mixture. We were unable to live in our home until the mixture was removed, and then electric power, heat, and water could be restored. Robert has been here and spoken with the Assistant City Engineer. We have told our councilperson, we want every person in the City of Utica to help us so that this utter devastation will not happen in our neighborhood again. We also were affected, and please, we're counting on you to help us with this water trouble. Let's prevent future flooding. Sherman Drive needs assistance. Can you help us?
It's the section between the Parkway or Garden Road and Schoolcraft, and it lies in the lower section. Because of that, the water accumulated. So we really would appreciate studies and, of course, something to rectify the matter as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Johnson, if you could please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of section three-two-four-four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes and forty-five seconds.
Okay. Patrick Johnson, I reside in Utica, New York. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will be brief and to the point. First of all, my sympathy to the couple that was just here, I cannot imagine what that would be. I hope that things get resolved. I can feel your pain. I am here to talk about the goodness in the City of Utica. I've been here, like many of you, I've lived here for mostly all of my life, with the exception of doing time in the military and living in Atlanta, Georgia. I love the City of Utica. With that said, I also understand that there are issues in this community that I think we have made progress on, but I'm extending an invitation specifically to the common council and other community members to attend a workshop on race relations. And I say that because I think that, and I say this with all due respect, with the good, hard work that it is to be an elected official, I think to effectively and fairly govern this City of Utica, we must have an understanding and a lens on race relations. I've lived in this city for more than fifty years, and in spite of the diversity that we have, we still have issues of racism in this community. I want to salute Delvin Moody, Councilman Delvin Moody, President Mike Galemy, certainly Deputy Chief Ed Noonan, Mr. Ingersoll, Marcus Phillips, for attending the workshops in the past. With all due respect to former councilpeople, whenever I've extended an invitation, I don't think there's been any participation, yes, Mr. DeBrango, but in your predecessors, and I understand that everybody's very busy, but I think if we look at the climate of this country, and if I were to be honest, I noticed even things that I saw last week, it was pretty contentious, I'm glad I didn't get into the fray, but there are things that happen institutionally in this community where I think that the City of Utica and all of our goodness, we owe it to ourselves to be better. So I'm extending a friendly invitation for you folks to attend on March nineteenth. This is not an indictment on your personal character, but as a governing body, and I will say that many institutions, law enforcement, fire department, corporations, not-for-profits, colleges, have attended these workshops, and if Utica's going to rise to its potential, I think that we need to get a better understanding and grip on race relations in a community that brags that we have forty different languages that speak in this community and that are reflected. I think, and not to say that we have to make it perfect, but I think that we can do better just with things that I see in this city. And yes, we have a problem with gun violence, and those people need to be prosecuted. I've done work with the police department and others addressing that, and I think that we're going to get that resolved, but that's a heavy lift. We didn't get there overnight, it's not going to be solved overnight. But I hope I'm making my point, and I see that there are some people out there in the community, but I just want to say it's a friendly, warm invitation to attend a workshop on race relations Thursday, March nineteenth, it's a month from today, the Utica Public Library, food will be served, and it's specifically for the common council, but not just for you. So I hope that I made my point clear.
What time?
Nine AM to two PM. I'm even shortening it an hour. The deputy chief will tell you that it's usually nine to three. Good food, good people, the water's warm, come in and join us, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Shackman, if you could please come forward. The common council has provided you a copy of section three-two-four-four, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
I am, sir.
Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes and forty-five seconds this evening.
Thank you. I am Rabbi Peter Shackman, and I'm the Rabbi of Temple Emanuel. I'm not here representing the temple, but hopefully representing myself and my faith as well as I can. I'm honored to follow my friend and teacher, Patrick Johnson, who has been partly responsible for my being here tonight. I know this is not a religious body, but I also know this is a community that often references religious values when making laws and when governing this community, so I want to reference some of those values as well. As I heard about something that's occurring now, I was reminded, we in our tradition are in the process of reading the narrative in the Hebrew scriptures of the Israelites wandering through the deserts, and some of you may remember that that wandering was not a straight line, that they went forward and then they went backwards in different ways. They didn't quite make a direct walk to the Promised Land, and as I understand that the council is considering pushing back on the state's bail reform law, I can't help but think it's the same way, that we're moving in the right direction, and now it sounds like some people want to move us back in the wrong direction. You know, in the religious tradition, the Western religious tradition, we often talk about a binary, a dichotomy between justice and mercy, but in this case, there's really no, there's really no binary issue here, that the old system of bail reform was both not merciful and not just to anyone, it wasn't just to the people who were incarcerated, certainly, and it certainly wasn't just to the community as well, because the old bail reform law did not protect the community, it did not lead to greater public safety, and the fact, the idea that some would advocate or suggest that it did is simply wrong. The facts just don't bear themselves out. I understand that seventy percent of the people who are incarcerated today are incarcerated because they can't make bail, and that we know that about twenty percent of them... they can't make bail, and that we know that about 20% of them, 20% of the people who are incarcerated, will ultimately be acquitted. That is, they're in jail right now, they have not been charged with a crime, in some cases, and they will ultimately be acquitted. So they're in jail for no reason at all, and they're not protecting anybody. But the other thing about the system that is so problematic and why we can't go back is that we're not, and why it's not really about public safety, is the only thing that distinguishes whether someone who's been accused of a crime is out on the street or not, is whether they have money. So a perfectly dangerous person who has money will be out on the street. And the idea that someone doesn't have money, that they won't be on the street. So we're not, any argument that references public safety is simply erroneous. We're living in a time now where more than ever before, truth is not valued. We, I mean, truth has always been endangered, but we're living in a time now where we simply make things up to convince ourselves that what we're doing is right. It may feel right to suggest that going back on bail reform, or suggesting the state go back on bail reform, it may feel right to do that, but it's not right. The evidence does not bear itself out, and a few anecdotal cases do not make a good argument. Yes, there are, the bail law may need to be tweaked, it may need to be revised, we may need to learn from it. But to simply push back to the old system, which was, as I said, it's from a religious standpoint, it is simply unjust. People who talk about religious values, people who go to their synagogues, or their churches, or their mosques, and who pray, and who reference sacred scripture that talks about making justice in our community, they can't go and then advocate that we promote injustice in our society. I, like you, and I think, I can't imagine, we don't all share this view, want our community to be safe. I want it to be physically safe, I want it to be ethically safe, I want it to be morally safe. I think that were this council to push back on the state's recent bail reform, I think that none of that would be the case. And I urge you to, not only to not push back, but to work to educate the community. Your job is not simply to listen, although it is to listen, but it's also to educate. You may know more than people that you're talking to about this, and you need to explain to them why what seems like the right thing to do is not good for them, is not good for our city, and I thank you.
Thank you. That's the final speaker this evening. The next order of business is the reading of the minutes. Do we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? We have a motion from McNeil. Is there a second? We have a second from Miola. We have a second. Are you requesting the floor, or was that a second?
No, that was a second.
Okay. I'm going to take the second from Friend. All right. Yeah. Yeah. Any opposed to dispensing of the reading of the minutes? All right. Minutes have been dispensed. Thank you. Just for procedural note, the minutes were provided in caucus and are available to anyone else at request. Thank you. Communications from the mayor and/or miscellaneous communications. Do you have any?
There are no communications from the mayor, but I do have the Office of the Comptroller provided the city's general fund cash account as of January 31st, 2020. The total is 8.584 million received and filed.
Thank you. Reports from the city officers. We have the Chief of Staff here this evening. Do you have anything to report?
No.
Okay. All right. Deputy Chief Noonan?
Mr. President, I'd just like to remind members of the Common Council, especially the new members of the Common Council, as well as the public, that the police department has a ride-along program. It's open to everyone, and it allows people to see what our officers do, the hard work they do on a daily basis, and how the police department operates. So I'd just like to encourage everyone to take advantage of that program.
Chief of Staff, I'd like to, would you like the floor?
Please.
All right. You have the floor.
Just really quick, how would somebody contact you to find out if they could ride along with you, or how do they start that process?
Yeah. Anyone who wants to, they can contact me directly and I'll set you up. I can provide my phone number and my email.
All right. Thank you. Chief Ingersoll?
No.
Thank you. Corporation Council?
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals, and also legislation to be introduced by the council members. First District and Majority Leader Maria McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everyone that the next regularly scheduled East Utica Concerned Citizens Meeting will be Monday, March 2nd at 6:30 at Mount Carmel Church. There will be a couple of guest speakers there. Chris Lawrence from the city will be there discussing the $10 million DRI, as well as the UPD will be talking about the residency and how they feel it will benefit the taxpayers and the people of the city of Utica if we do change that. I will also be there too, if anybody has any questions for me, and I will be talking about whatever's going on in the city and anyone wants to discuss further. And then next, I would like to take from the table Resolution Number Two. And I'd like the clerk to read it, please.
Resolution Number Two. What's the name of that resolution?
Resolution approving the granting of an overhead utility easement over Edward Street.
Is there a second? We have a second from Miola. Any opposed from taking the resolution approving the granting of an overhead utility easement over Edward Street from the table? No one's opposed. Clerk, if you could please read.
Resolution approving the granting of an overhead utility easement over Edward Street, whereas Matt Brewing Company is a New York corporation having an address of 811 Edward Street, Utica, New York 13502, and whereas Matt Brewing Company requires an overhead utility bridge across Edward Street, a public street and a right-of-way owned and maintained by the city of Utica. And whereas Matt Brewing Company requires a permanent easement from the city on lands more specifically described in the attached grant of easement for the purposes of constructing and maintaining overhead facilities that conduct utilities for its business operations. Now be it resolved that the mayor or his authorized representative is authorized to execute the attached grant of easement and any other necessary documents to effectuate this resolution. Your votes, please. Ayes adopted.
Thank you. Anything else this evening?
I move to take from the table Resolution Number 10. It's a resolution approving the granting of an easement for gas services to Niagara Mohawk for the Niwa Visitor Center at the Utica Zoo.
All right, just hang on just one second. Just need to ask the clerk something. Is there a second? We have a second from Williamson. Any opposed taking this from the table? Okay. Clerk, if you could please read.
Resolution approving the granting of an easement for gas service to Niagara Mohawk for the Niwa Visitor Center at the Utica Zoo, whereas Niagara Mohawk is a public corporation having an address of 300 Ari Boulevard West Syracuse, New York 13202, and whereas Niagara Mohawk maintains, improves, and constructs underground natural gas facilities and above and underground electrical facilities for the benefit of the public. And whereas Niagara Mohawk requires a permanent easement for the city on lands more specifically described in the attached grant of easement for the purpose of constructing underground distribution facilities to provide gas service to the Niwa Visitor Center at the Utica Zoo. Resolved that the mayor or his authorized representative is authorized to execute the attached grant of easement and any other necessary documents to effectuate this resolution. Your votes, please. Ayes adopted.
Mr. President, I move to adopt this piece of legislation. We have to adopt it. I mean...
Adopt it?
Well, I mean, we've taken, never mind.
You took it from the table, we voted on it. We're good.
I know, I wanted to make sure, because you made a comment, I wanted to make sure that it was understood.
Oh, no, we were just making sure that, I was just making sure the minutes were...
Okay.
No, no, that was fine. Yes, you're good.
All right. The next would be a proclamation I'd like to introduce, and Councilman LaMedico is actually the person who is sponsoring this, and it is full council. He asked that I would read it into the minutes, so I will now read this into the minutes.
So you're making a motion to introduce, what's the name? Let's just...
It is Staying True to the Medicaid Promise.
All right. Is there a second to that introduction? We have Williamson with the second. Sorry, I'm just going by whoever I see first. Any opposed to the introduction of this legislation? Okay. Please read.
Whereas over 6 million vulnerable New Yorkers receive high-quality, affordable health care because they are directly covered by Medicaid. For these children, mothers, and elderly people with disabilities and lower income, Medicaid is literally the difference between life and death. Whereas there is 53,262 recipients in our district, to include 27,193 adults, 3,921 seniors, whereas the financial contribution to New York State nursing homes from Medicaid is 75%. 40 percentage of this district population is covered by Medicaid, which includes the majority of the hospitals and nursing homes who care for our population. Whereas we are deeply concerned to see media reports about the possibility of a steep cut to Medicaid in the 2020 state budget, whereas such cut would have deep, lasting consequences. It would not only create a health care crisis for the most vulnerable in our state, but also severely harm the health care delivery system all New Yorkers depend on. Drastic Medicaid cuts would make it extremely difficult for financially struggling, safety, net hospital, and nursing homes to continue to provide quality care in New York's most vulnerable communities. Whereas New York is rightly proud of its proven commitment to protect and expand health care coverage, a commitment that has resulted in 95% of New Yorkers having health insurance, we cannot turn our backs on more than 6 million New Yorkers by cutting Medicaid. Resolved that as elected officials representing residents of the city of Utica, it is our conviction that as budget discussion proceeds, we must remember our collective promise to protect Medicaid and the vulnerable New Yorkers who rely on it. We cannot go back on the Medicaid promise.
If there's no debate, please bring this to a vote.
Ayes adopted.
Okay. And then please let the minutes show that Councilman LaMedico, as stated, was the sponsor on this, although he is not here this evening because he couldn't. Thank you. Anything else, Councilwoman?
I'm through this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Second District, Councilman Robert Burmester, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the first of the year, it seems like I'm just taking care of traffic problems, and it's snow emergency, people won't move their vehicles off the streets, it makes it tough for the fire department, Rescue One, DPW, and the police shouldn't have to go and monitor us for not getting our vehicles off the road. These students have permits that they feel that they're allowed to park whenever, and how long they, but through a snow emergency, just have courtesy to your neighbor. Move your car, allow them to clean up the streets. Hopefully, you know, when Rescue One goes through, they can make it. They won't have to reroute, and the people who are deserving the attention they need at this time can get it. I'm just asking the community just be a little more courteous with the DPW, the police department, and the fire department. I want to thank you.
Thank you. Third District, Council...
Council...
Yes, you may.
So just, those overhead parking permits are not valid during snow emergency, so individuals who have those should not be parking on the roadway during a snow emergency.
Okay.
That's, you know, to help the DPW improve the roadways.
That's, well, we'll talk about them. The clerk's office does issue those permits? Where are the permits issued? Parking or through the clerk's office?
Through the clerk's office, but they go through the police department.
Okay. We'll follow up after on that. Maybe there's some messaging that we can work on. Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Robert and Laura Zaloom for coming tonight. You know, we've talked a lot in this group about the various virtues of public comment period, and one of them is to make sure that, you know, it gives us the opportunity to learn things we might not otherwise know. I consider myself pretty well-versed now in the flooding problems in Utica because I represent South Utica, and I had no idea of the way in which you'd suffered, and I'm sorry for that suffering. I know from my own constituents just how terrible it is. So I really appreciate you coming tonight. I think it's also not easy to come and describe one's own tragedy in front of a room of people. So, you know, the city benefits from you being willing to do that and be here. So we've been dealing, of course, with flooding in South Utica, both of a similar kind of flooding that the Zalooms suffered from in terms of our infrastructure becoming overloaded by too much rain too quickly, but also, of course, by the Sequoit overtopping its banks. We had a very, we've had now, I've had three meetings since, I was going to say since taking office, but actually two meetings since taking office, and three meetings since winning my election. So, because I held the first meeting in the end of November with people in South Utica. And every time, lots of people are coming out. The people of Utica are really anxious to hear from us, from all of us, in different ways about what we're doing. And the last meeting was February 11th, and a whole bunch of people came from a variety of offices. It was really terrific. Heather Mawitt and Stephanie Wertz from our own City Hall came down. The DEC was there explaining the process by which the DEC gives grants so that the Sequoit Creek can be maintained. Kristin Campbell was there from Oneida County Planning. We had representatives from the governor's office, Marion Butenshan's office, Anthony Brandisi's office. So we had lots of people there giving up their evening time in order to explain to my constituents and other people what's going on with the flooding and the various efforts that we're taking, which are moving along. From the point of view, of course, of people who suffer from flooding, nothing is being done fast enough, and nothing can be done fast enough, but we're at the same time working, I believe, as quickly as we can, as responsibly as we can. It's actually, I've learned a great deal over the last couple of months about flooding and how incredibly complicated it is to address. Of course, on the Halloween floods, we got four to six inches of rain in a two-hour period. My brother is a hydrologist, and I said that to him, and he said, "No, that's wrong." And I said, "No," and he looked it up, and he said, "Oh, my God." He was flabbergasted that we would get that much rain in that short a period of time. So there's only so much one can do when the rain comes that hard and fast. But the meeting was a big success. I'm sure that I'll be having more like that in the future. In fact, I'm further convinced that more people in the city need to be involved in these kinds of meetings. One of the big takeaways I had from these three very successful meetings was the extent to which, when we extend ourselves to our constituents, they are anxious to have us do that. We had 80 people at our first meeting, and 20 people at our second, and over 40 people at our third meeting. So, big success, and again, really sort of hats off to all of the government officials here in City Hall, at the county level, at the state level, et cetera, who extended themselves to my constituents. I really appreciate that. My constituent hours carry on. They're turning out to be a big success. Every first, second, and fourth Tuesday of the month, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon at the Other Side Gallery next to Cafe Domenico. I don't do the third Tuesday because I go to the Sequoit Creek Basin Intermunicipal Commission. I'm having a town hall, a general town hall. I've been having these specific meetings about floodings, but I'm having a general town hall this Monday, and I would extend the invitation to anybody who'd like to come. Mostly, I will be listening to people. We will, I will listen about flooding, I'm sure, but I also would like to open it up to hear what people's general concerns are and how people want me to be their representative, and what kind of issues they want me to take up. And then the last thing I want to say, oh, I guess I have two more things to say. I was going to do my usual routine about George Orwell and the ridiculousness of voting to waive minutes that didn't exist, but I didn't have to do it. Thank you to our clerk. We have minutes as of tonight, and we are working diligently to get those up online. So soon, we'll be really up and running with minutes being readily and easily accessible and available to not us so much as members of the public. So I really appreciate that that is moving along as swiftly as it is. And then the last thing I want to say is that I've never gone to Patrick's workshop, and I'm embarrassed about that. So I'm going to here make a public commitment to go to the next workshop that Patrick Johnson is holding on race relations. I've been meaning to go to that for a long time. I always find myself too busy, and so I really appreciate that Patrick came tonight and gave me the opportunity to make this promise in front of all of you. So I'll see you all there. Right? All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Fourth District Councilmember and President ProTemp, Frank Miola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pat Johnson, you probably don't remember, but I did attend one a while back ago. I don't know if you remember. And it was quite interesting. We had a good time, and Pat was very informative. So I would like to ask the my colleagues who didn't, weren't able to attend yet, to please attend, and you'll get some very good information there. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the Zalooms. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the Zalooms concerning their property and their flooding problems. A few years ago, we put together, the city put together what's called Storm Water Management Plan. I don't know if that plan's been updated yet. I don't know what stage of that plan we're at, but I will find out. The Storm Water Management Plan oversees the sewer, storm sewer flow when we have these rainstorms that apparently flood a lot of our cellars. It covers the whole city and a few years ago, it cost us a few, a few dollars to get this Storm Water Management Plan together. Do I know if any money's been applied towards it yet? No. Do I know if there's any goal schedule with this plan? I don't. But I will be looking into this plan and I hope to put together with my colleagues a goal schedule with this plan and funding put aside for this plan. We do receive sewer funding and funds, money from the Sewer Fund. I hope that we can apply some of this money every year and do a phase, whatever it takes. Maybe some budget money that we can find here and there. But the Storm Water Management Plan was our plan to start resolving the issues that we all have with our basements being flooded and our homes being flooded. And if anybody ever got their homes flooded, they know it's a chill and something that you really have, you lose a lot of night's sleep because of it, because of it. So I like to get together my colleagues and see what that update is and that Storm Water Management Plan, and we can put together maybe a schedule for our municipality and start funding it so we can possibly try to resolve some property issues that we have here. I'd like to thank that. Next, I would like to implement some legislation. I do need the Thursday rule waived, Mr. President, if you'd like to make a motion, request a motion for it, sir?
Yes. Well, you, you've got the motion. Is there a second to waive the Thursday rule for the introduction of this legislation? There's a second from Williamson. Any opposed? Would you like to read the legislation?
If you don't mind, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, whereas a significant power outage regarding the service by the Spectrum Corporation occurred in the Mohawk Valley and beyond, whereas Spectrum Corporation, whose franchise to operate within, oh, that's why I can't see it too well. Excuse me.
It is small print.
Within the city of Utica is subject to approval by legislation and executive branch of city government, has acknowledged publicly that its customers in the city of Utica had lost cable services. Whereas Spectrum Corporation has announced its intent in reimbursement of customers of loss of services that they have sustained due to circumstance that they have experienced at the end of the week, February third, two thousand and twenty. Be it resolved that the Spectrum proposal set forth in the Spectrum release requires each individual make an application for reimbursement, which places an entire burden on their customers. Be it further resolved, the Spectrum Corporation has full knowledge of its customers affected and has full knowledge of the loss of services to those customers and should assume responsibility of computing the loss of each customer and deducted the same from the billing period that covers the billing loss. Mr. President, would you please bring this to vote?
So is there a second to the introduction? All right, thank you. Any opposed to the introduction of this legislation? Councilman Moody, would you like the floor for something?
He'll make the amendment.
Okay, actually, I need, I need to also check something on this legislation really quick prior to the, unless this is what you're going to do, I wonder.
He's going to add to the legislation.
Okay, so I just need to check one sec, one second.
Can you clear the board, too?
Yeah, I would actually, can I request that the council make an amendment to this? Spectrum Corporation, can, can you strike Spectrum Corporation and replace with Spectrum slash Charter Communications? The reason I ask is Spectrum Corporation is actually technically a different.
You're correct, Mr. President. It's subsidiary.
All right. Would, would someone like to make that motion to amend? Strike and replace, I should say. All right, we got a motion to strike and replace. DeBrango has the second. Any opposed? Okay, so anywhere that it's read Spectrum Corporation is, will, will now read Spectrum slash Charter Communications. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
I just want to make an amendment. Be it further resolved that a copy of this be sent to Spectrum Charter Corporation.
I second Councilman Moody's.
Okay. Any opposed? Can't say anyone would be. All right.
Mr. President, I'd like to make another amendment.
Oh, what's, what is your amendment?
I'd like to add, I'd like to add internet and phone service.
I second the motion by Councilman DeBrango.
All right, which paragraph are we?
Second.
Second paragraph.
Lost cable service.
Ah, cable, internet, and phone service. Is there a second? Was it? It was Councilman Miola. No one's opposed. Amendments have been made. Any other amendments or debate?
Mr. President, didn't we, we agree that we would, this would be sponsored by full council?
Oh, yes.
Okay, full council. Your votes.
Aye, aye is adopted.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm all set, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilmember Delvin Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first give a major shout out, and I should have done this weeks ago. Some of you may have seen a few weeks ago, Grady Faulkner opened up a home for homeless boys at the city of Utica. I believe the director, is he still here? Janiqua Robinson, if you can stand. She's the director of that house, residential manager, and the work that they're going to be doing to really transform the lives of boys in this city is absolutely tremendous. I just wanted to give them a huge shout out on the work that they'll be doing and the work that they already done. So I want to also reiterate the solution summit that's happening this Saturday, also a thanks to the Chief of Staff, Marcus Phillips, and the Mayor's Office and the Access and Inclusion Committee for the work that they're doing to help us all mitigate this public safety issue in our city and really putting our minds together to see how we can best make the city safe and provide a pathway of prevention and intervention moving forward. Some good news and some legislation I would like to introduce to the floor to pull Resolution Six from committee. Resolution to reinstate the city of Utica Youth Common Council.
All right, so there's a motion to introduce that legislation. There's a second. We have a second from Friend. Any opposed?
Committee or council?
Well, it was reviewed by the pre-meeting conference committee at the hall, so this actually was not technically in committee. It was reviewed as new legislation in the pre-meeting conference. So this is a motion to introduce. This is new legislation. Thank you. It's been introduced. Would you like to read?
Can I read it in part?
Yeah.
Yes.
You may. Yes.
Yes. Whereas the city of Utica is a diverse community and home to nearly sixty thousand residents, among these youth under the youth of age of seventeen, make up twenty-one percent of this population. And whereas a vibrant democracy requires citizen participation and strong relationships between the city government and its community, this means providing a forum where youth can speak directly to government and advise on issues pertinent to other young people and share in the decision-making process of the city. And whereas the city of Utica Common Council in two thousand and thirteen created the city of Utica Youth Common Council in collaboration with members of the council and the mayor of the city, which gave hope to many youth and helped to provide experience of city government and civic service.
Move the microphone cable around. It's probably a.
Edge it.
There we go.
Thank you, sir. This is a conspiracy. Master Chief did it.
I've got a button up here. That's what he's implying.
Yeah, yeah. Now therefore be resolved by the members of the Common Council of the city of Utica, New York, as follows establishes the city of Utica Youth Common Council as an advisory body to this legislative body. I want to make a few amendment, would I have to make the amendments now or just?
This is being introduced new, so you modified it in the pre-meeting conference. Just read it as is. No amendments necessary.
Be it further resolved that the city of Utica Common Council establish the following. Composition that the city of Utica Common Council shall consist of residents of the city of Utica who are juniors and sophomores.
Juniors and above?
Juniors and above.
Thank you.
In high school and who shall also be enrolled student at a high school within the city of Utica and maintain suitable academic standing. Also, I can, I can jump to the end, right? Duties and powers F. The president may designate representatives to attend community forums and meetings and provide the youth council with a periodic briefing. Be it further resolved that the city of Utica Common Council recommend that a small portion of city funds be allocated to support the recommendation for youth service activities and objectives by the city of Utica Common Council. The city shall create a minister in order of revenue and expenditure accounts related to the common council according to the city budget and academic standards and procedures. I think this is enough to read for the youth common council.
So I'd just like to, since it was read in part, I'd like to ask the council for their acknowledgement that this was reviewed in full in the pre-meeting conference. Is anyone in disagreement with that? Okay.
Also, this is full council as well.
If there's no debate, bring it to a vote. Your votes.
So you're not going to adopt this? Which one?
The resolution. Youth council.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, resolution. Yes. Thank you.
Aye, aye is adopted.
Anything else this evening?
Yeah, I think mine's working now.
Yeah.
Don't turn my mic off again. Resolution to appoint an advisor to the youth, to the city of Utica Youth Common Council. Whereas the city of Utica Common Council has established and reinstated the city of Utica Youth Common Council to advise the council and city government on issues pertinent to youth and young residents. And whereas to better assist the council and administration and guidance of the said youth common council, the city of Utica Common Council has deemed it necessary and expedient to appoint an advisor to the Utica Youth Common Council. Be it now therefore resolved that members of the city of Utica Common Council appoint Stephanie Hanlon to be advisor to the city of Utica Youth Common Council. Be it now therefore further resolved that, that her term shall be for two years, starting in two thousand and twenty and ending in two thousand and twenty-two at the end of this current council's term.
All right, so is there a second? We have a second from Beatrice. Any opposed to the introduction of this legislation? Your votes.
Aye, aye is adopted.
All right.
I want to thank my, I want to thank members of the common council, and I want to have the new advisor to the youth common council, Stephanie Hanlon, stand up. Thank you all. I think this is a, a step to really get more young people involved in the process and get them engaged into city government. That's it.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilmember Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank a few people. First, I want to thank the Zalooms. I understand totally where you're coming from. In North Utica, I've seen a ton of this flooding going on the same way, and I can't imagine, like Councilman Miola stated, what it takes to lose what you, you know, lost and the courage of coming up and explaining all this to us. And we, we will, I promise you, we will work on trying to get a program and following up on it. I'd also like to thank Patrick Johnson for coming up and telling us about his program. Unfortunately, I work a full-time job, so it's going to be very difficult for me to go on a Thursday morning, but maybe you'll have some other meetings at different times that I can attend. I try to attend most of your programs in the area. I'd also like to thank my good friend. I didn't realize that he did this three years ago. My good friend Ron Vincent, who's always looking out for me, and I'm very glad that I'm going to be able to vote on the Charlestown project. We'll get to that in a little while. I'd like to like, also like to thank the Police Department. We had a safe, public safety meeting last week and they followed up on a lot of different items for us, for me especially. I really appreciate that. I had a, I had a call from a volunteer fire, fireman who is in, a member of the Frankfurt Fire Department, and he wanted to make sure that I thanked the Utica Fire Department for, last week there was a fire in Frankfurt, right on the border, Frankfurt, Utica, and it was, it was a very bad fire. A gentleman lost his life there, but he was very, very, they were very happy that our fire department got there and helped them out. I'd also like to thank the DPW and the Parks Department. I've been on the phone with them with different tasks and they've, they've always been there. They've helped me out immensely and I appreciate that. And lastly, I'd like to remind you that on February twenty-fourth, we have our North Utica meeting, okay? I have, it's at six-thirty at the North Utica Senior Center. We're going to be having, it's very important that any residents come to this meeting. The Police Department will be there speaking on behalf of the residency, and I really think that, you know, people need to listen to their cause. Also, we're going to have members from the, the Mayor's Office. I'm not sure if the mayor's going to be there, be going, going over the budget. The mayor will be there. And also, I will have, I have my normal from six to six-thirty, I'm there for like office hours, so if anybody needs to come and see me, tell me any of their issues, anything you, you know, like to bring up, I'd love to talk to yous. And lastly, I'd like to bring the resolution out about Charlestown, and I'd like the clerk to read that.
Those, there's a second. Those were brought to the floor and would be introduced in the order of business for the majority and minority leader. However, if you'd like to, you would just then be the sponsor of the legislation, which is fine.
Okay, yes.
Would you like to introduce it?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I'd like the clerk to read it.
All right, so there's a motion to introduce, hang on just one second, since we're going there. There's a motion to introduce a resolution authorizing the prospective cancellation of taxes for three-eleven Turner Street, Utica, New York. Is there a second? We have a second from Moody. Well, there's multiple seconds, but he beat you guys to the punch there. Any opposed? All right, so that legislation has been introduced. Clerk, would you please read?
Resolution authorizing the prospective cancellation of taxes for three-eleven Turner Street, Utica, New York. Whereas the city of Utica has for many years enforced the collection of delinquent real estate taxes pursuant to Real Property Tax Law, Article eleven, Title three, foreclosure of tax lien by proceeding in rem. And whereas Real Property Tax Law Section eleven thirty-eight provides methods to withdraw partials of property from foreclosure and certain instances cancel said taxes. And whereas the city of Utica desires to issue or otherwise obtain a certificate of prospective cancellation for certain real property of delinquent taxes because there is no practical method of enforcing the delinquent tax liens arising against the parcel. And whereas the action can be taken by the common council pursuant to Real Property Tax Law Section eleven thirty-eight dash six to direct the enforcing officer to issue a certificate of prospective cancellation. And whereas the issuance of such a certificate of prospective cancellation renders the parcel involved exempt from taxation until it's, it is determined by the common council that the parcel should be restored to the taxable portion of the tax roll. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council hereby determines that there is no practical methods to enforce the collection of delinquent tax liens arising hereafter against the parcel listed herein. And it be further resolved that these parcels be made exempt pursuant to RPT eleven, Section eleven thirty-eight, and be it further resolved that the tax enforcement officer, example, the city of Utica Comptroller is hereby authorized and directed to issue certificates. of Utica Comptroller is hereby authorized and directed to issue certificates of prospective cancellation. And be it further resolved that certified copies of this resolution be forwarded to the City of Utica Assessor and Anita County Property Agent and Director of Real Property Taxes, resolved that the parcel shall remain exempt until the common council determines that the parcel should be restored to the taxable portion of the assessment form and the enforcing officer files a certificate of restoration. Your votes, please.
AAs adopted.
Anything else this evening?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman at large and minority leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Patrick Johnson, could you send an agenda of that, that class on the 19th of March? That is on a, on a...
Thursday.
It's on a Thursday? And I'm in the same situation. I do work during school, but I also teach probably the same concepts you're probably teaching through my cadets as well. So if you could send that agenda item to the clerk, and so I can maybe mirror up or maybe bring you along or have a one-on-one coffee and see where he can come up with. But that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman at large, Frank DeBranco, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to express my condolences or whatever to the Zaloon family. It's devastating. I did have a flood in my basement as well at times, not during that storm, and I know how devastating it is. I promise you, I will work with your councilman, Councilman Muela, to see if we can get to the bottom of it, maybe get some city officials over there and take a look at what's happening and where the water flow is. Obviously, it's ending up in your section, so I don't know if there's a diversion. I'm not an engineer, but hopefully we can get, get some attention to it and maybe divert it somehow. On another note, Delvin, I know you have the solution summit on the Parkway Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00. I plan on attending. Hopefully, we could brainstorm, put our heads together. I said you want to break down in groups, so hopefully we could come up with some sort of solution on what's going on with some of the violence in Utica. I do want to commend the police department. They did arrest four individuals for shots fired in the city. I know we've been hearing a lot of that lately, and hopefully, you know, we can get to the bottom of it. And to start out, the solution summit may be a way to go. That'll be all. Thank you.
I got one.
Well, hold on just one moment. Are you all set completely? Yes? Yes, you may have the floor again really quick.
Councilman Moody, is this, is this open to the public, this whole thing, or is this just officials?
I don't even want to take credit. This is absolutely Marcus. It is open to the public, but Marcus can have more detail on it.
No, so Councilman Moody's being modest, like normal. But the Access and Inclusion Committee is hosting a summit. It's not only open to the public, it's useless without the public.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to see a bunch of officials and three people for the public.
Yeah, no, we've reached out to a lot of, a lot of agencies, a lot of organizations. We've done press on it. We've done radio shows. We're saying it now, but it's absolutely, if the public doesn't show up, there's, there's no point in having this, huh?
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So you got, all right.
Good? All right, before we move on, I just would like to say something regarding the race relations forum that Patrick Johnson spoke about. The name, just stating it as a race relations forum, it's much more than that. I did attend a couple of the sessions, and really what I want to impress upon the council and the public for that matter, if they reach out to you to attend the forum, Patrick, is that no matter how much you do know or think you know about the demographics of a city, the interaction between different socioeconomic groups, the interactions amongst different people within our community, and how people do divide us, which we shouldn't be, but divide us by race, just by description alone, you can't learn what you would learn by sitting in Patrick's forum and interacting and having conversations with people. Sitting in a roundtable forum, if you have a chance to pop in, the first one I was invited to by one of my friends, I did have to stay for a good majority of it, but then leave because I did have to get back to work as well, but I stayed for, you know, a good, you know, the full morning and part of the afternoon session. The second one, I was able to stay the whole time, but it is, you can come in and out of the forum if you need to. And then something else that I want to mention about the forum is the fact that the way it's set up is you break halfway through. You have a lot of discussions in the morning, and then you break and you eat together for lunch. And it's very valuable because you have all these discussions where some of them are uncomfortable, some of them you come to resolve, some of them you agree to disagree, but overall you work together to just describe how you, how you feel from both sides of a table or three different sides of a table, how, whatever it may be. And then, then you eat together, and then you come back and you discuss different issues. And what you take away from the forum is an understanding of things that you can't predict. And that's why it's important to participate, because you, because you simply can't predict what you will learn from people when you sit down and have an open conversation. So I just wanted to say that and commend you for having the forums, because that's, the takeaway was invaluable. So thank you. And whether or not people can attend, I just want you to know that, because if you can, you can, and if you can't, of course, as Patrick said, it's a warm invitation, and he did mention that we all do have jobs and we're all busy. So obviously, if we can go, it will be greatly appreciated. Thank you. All right. We have one more piece of legislation this evening. This came by way of the Law Department. It is the ordinance authorizing permission to build an encroach upon a city right-of-way on Lafayette Street. It will require the motion and second from the majority and minority leader. Would you like to introduce this?
Mr. President, it's, it requires a Thursday rule waiver, sir?
Does this? Did this come in?
It says on the top.
When did this come? I'm just curious. When did it come in? Okay. Well, regardless, let's waive the Thursday rule just for good measure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. Do we have a second to waive the Thursday rule? We have a second from McNeil. Any opposed? Councilwoman, would you like to make a motion to introduce this legislation?
I move to introduce the ordinance authorizing the permission to build an encroachment upon city rights way, right-of-way on Lafayette Street.
All right. Second from Williamson. Any opposed to the introduction of this legislation as reviewed in the pre-meeting conference?
I'd like to make the motion and put it back in committee.
Second.
Okay. Specific committee or are you using committee the whole?
Committee the whole.
Committee the whole. Any opposed? It's in. All right, that's our final piece of legislation this evening. Is there anything else from the floor? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, so we got Moody, Beatrice. Have a good evening.